Anna, could you send the mayor pro temo text? Jay, we have an echo in the room.
Hi, Mayor Stahler, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. We have an echo in the chambers. Oh, I think it's solved now. All right. Good evening, everyone. We've reached the hour of six o'clock. This is Tuesday, April 20, 2021. This is the meeting of city council for the city of Woodland. We welcome you all this evening. We are operating under the governor's executive order during the COVID and pandemic, allowing us to meet electronically. We welcome citizen participation in our meetings, and there are various ways to do it, and you can find them, those ways written out on our agenda. And you can find the agenda at www.cityofwoodland.org. So if you'd like to participate tonight, please check that website and get the agenda for your use. Well, now call, our meeting has been called to order. Clerk, would you kindly take the role?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Vega?
Present.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena?
Present.
Councilmember Lansburg?
Present.
Mayor Stahler?
Present.
Thank you.
All members of the council are in attendance tonight. We'll now go to the pledge of allegiance. Brent Meyer, are you there? And can you lead us in the pledge tonight?
I am here, and I can.
Thank you. Please join, rise, and we'll join Brent in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brent. Let me also mention to the community that we welcome scouts coming to our meetings and leading us in the pledge, or even virtually scouts can lead us in the pledge. If you're interested, please let me know. All right, that moves us along to communications and public comment. Madam Clerk, has any member of the public indicated a desire to speak on an item not otherwise on the agenda tonight?
No, I don't have anyone, and I don't have any emails or voicemail messages.
All right, thank you. That allows us to move along to communications, council, and staff. And I'm going to start tonight. I would also like to say that this is a chance for members of the council to share anything of interest to them that they want the public to know. But that doesn't mean any of us have to speak ever, and we certainly don't have to just run through a list of meetings. So I'll try to take my own good, good advice on that. So I only have two items tonight. First, we did, we, four members of the council attended a badge pinning for two new firefighters recently, and it was just a wonderful event. Every time we bring new people on the staff, it's a hopeful beginning. It was great to get both of these wonderful new people joining our fire suppression community. Also, Yolo County Transit District has been busy due to the retirement of Terry Bassett, longtime regional leader Marty Tuttle, who directed SECOD for several years. That's the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and several more years as West Sacramento City Manager has been brought on as a management consultant to assist Acting Director Jose Perez. I joined the staff today for lunch and toured the operation. All should know that it is a well-managed, forward-looking operation with almost all CNG as compressed natural gas buses, and, and now six new electric buses. Mr. Tuttle introduced the first point-to-point public ride-sharing operation in the country, in the entire country while at West Sacramento. It is called VIA. It is my hope that we can get such a system going in Woodland as well. I'll reserve my mayor's minute for after the remainder of the council reports. Mayor Pro Tem Vega, do you wish to speak this evening?
Yes, Mayor Stahler, thank you. So I just wanted to share an observation. As kids return back to school, I've noticed that a lot of us parents are out frantically trying to get our kids at school, so I just wanted to share some, uh, just hopes that we're all watching how we drive, including myself. And I'm just so thankful to see the kids walk into school and seeing families kind of resemble some sense of normalcy. So thanks, I know there was, this was a lot of work from our partners over on the school district, so teachers and just the families. This has been a rough year, but it has been very refreshing to see all the kids and families out. That'll be all, Mayor Stahler, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Vega. Let's move on to Councilmember Rich Lansburg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll also keep my comments brief tonight. You know, on January 5 of this year, this council passed Resolution Number 7624 in support of the District Attorney's Five Point Plan to End Homelessness. This plan is now found in Assembly Bill 1542, which is cosponsored by our own Assemblywoman Cecilia Ibr Curry and our State Senator Bill Dodd. This bill has passed its first hurdle in the legislature, and that is the Public Safety Committee, which passed this referendum 7-0. The bill now moves to the Health Committee, and I just hope that we can keep this bill going because Yolo County, if this bill passes, Yolo County will be a pilot project with the idea of ending homelessness in our community by getting some very much-needed services to those folks who find it difficult to make a wise choice. So I hope this keeps going, and I hope that this bill passes, and our legislature has afforded to to pass it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lansburg. Councilmember Danielle Garcia Cadena?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to acknowledge that this is National Volunteer Week, and I would like to thank all the volunteers who have dedicated many, many hours to our community to help make the city a better place for us all. That's, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia Cadena. Councilmember Vicky Fernandez, do you wish to speak tonight?
Thank you, Mayor Stahler. Yes, and I am going to kind of just refer to some of my meetings during this past week. The three-by-two-by-two has been formally changed to Collaborative for Woodland Youth, which is our committee that we meet with the district and Woodland Community College. So just want to give my colleagues an update that it's now the Collaborative for Woodland Youth instead of the three-by-two-by-two. Also, thank you to my colleagues. It was nice to see everyone in my very first public appearance at the pinning of firefighters Steele and Zuniga, and thank you to Chief Zane for his wonderful presentation for the new firefighters and their families. I also wanted to remind everyone, if you haven't submitted your applications or are interested in submitting applications for the Yolo Salona Air Quality Management District, there's, that, those grant applications are still available. And also would like to thank any resident who participated in our Woodland Police Department Community Survey or has, or has participated in the Yolo County Community Survey. Thank you for your time and your interest in, in voicing your opinions and concerns or praise for our, for our community. So thank you for your input, and a special thank, thank you to Silvina Fausto for your help on that. And I believe they also had a presentation on the new program that is trying to be implemented with the Collaborative for Woodland Youth, a partnership with Woodland Community College and the Youth Detention Partnership. So we kind of got an overview presentation this last week, which was very informative. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez. And now for my mayor's minute. The pandemic has affected all of us in multiple ways, some actually good, but others not good at all. I'm thinking of the mental well-being of our citizens, including our children. Loneliness and depression are all too common in our society, including here in Woodland. It is a lesson in the pointlessness of just acquiring more and more material things when what really satisfies are the things of the spirit. So how do we shift our orientation to those things which really bring us joy? I believe there is evidence of it all around us. I have seen more families riding their bikes together or taking walks together. I have seen folks enjoying the company of their dogs as they stroll the neighborhoods. With the reawakening of society as the impositions of COVID protocols start to lessen, people are again walking the streets of our downtowns, enjoying indoors and outdoors dining and more. And the weather is certainly helping as well. But even all of this is not bringing healing to some among us. One of my own neighbors passed on recently, having been incapable, having been incapacitated and upset over a job termination and resorting to alcohol, which destroyed his health. It is beyond sad and so unnecessary. Please be open to the cries of help from those who need encouragement and a lift. Think about what you can do to meet the needs of those suffering from these challenges, and then do it. And we welcome your good ideas anytime for how we can help lift the mental well-being of our community. Just give us a call. That concludes my mayor's minute. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Let me start by a quick reminder that tomorrow is a significant milestone for our community as the Woodland Public Library will reopen for the first time in a year. So encourage folks to venture out and see our, our library with quite a few upgrades that occurred, taking advantage of the shutdown over the past year. I want to thank the nearly 500 community residents that submitted a response to our community safety survey. Councilmember Fernandez mentioned, we'll be evaluating those responses and, you know, using that to help inform continued improvement in our public safety operations. Community Services Department is actively enrolling for this summer's youth programs and camps. We are onboarding nearly 100 employees to, to help provide those programs and camps this summer. So if there's any youth in our community that are looking for summer employment, I believe there's still an opportunity to get an application in to be part of those programs. I heard today from Christine Engel that our swimming program is already full. However, staff is actively working to figure out how to expand capacity under our COVID guidelines to provide additional swim camp registration. I too want to welcome firefighter Matty Steele and Omar Zuniga to our firefighter ranks. The badge pinning ceremony last Friday was pretty special and a great milestone for them personally, and we're grateful to have them join our ranks and part of our fire department. Also want to congratulate longtime Public Works Utility Maintenance Worker Tim Fragoso, who retired this month after 24 years providing great service to our community. So thank you, Tim, for providing great service and dedication to our community. And then I'll close with an introduction to a new staff member, our Communications Manager, which recently started also in April, and he'll be walking the council through the city's 150th, uh, subsequent annual celebration activities later on this agenda. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Like to hear all that good news, Ken. All right, that brings us to presentations. And our first is the I-5 Managed Lanes Project. And I understand Jess Avila is going to present tonight, but Ken, do you want to introduce the item or Brent?
Yeah, I'll have our Community Development Director Brent Meyer introduce the item. And as the speaker is getting ready to set up their PowerPoint presentation, Brent, if you wouldn't mind giving a brief introduction, that'd be great.
Sure. Good evening, council. Here with us, we have Jess Avila of Caltrans. Jess is actually a former resident of Woodland, and he's here to present this I-5 corridor project. He's also pretty familiar with other projects. I know he's involved in the I-80 Managed Lane Project, and so he's also available to answer other questions that we have for him. He's also involved in the I-5 corridor management study that we're working on with Caltrans, which actually studies the length of I-5 outside of these project limits that actually includes Woodland. So we're happy to have him here tonight. Go ahead, Jess.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Mayor, as City Council for having me to be able to share with you this I-5 corridor improvement project. What I'd like to do is briefly discuss the comprehensive multimodal corridor plan that Brent just brought up, and then I will present the I-5 corridor improvement project or managed lane project and provide some examples of what a managed lane is, let you know what some of the benefits are of managed lane, review the traffic operational alternatives that we're studying on this I-5 managed lane project, and then share with you the project estimate, milestones, and, and then contact information. So the comprehensive multimodal corridor plan is something that Caltrans District 3 is working on. It extends from the San Joaquin County line all the way up to Highway 16 through Woodland. And so this multimodal corridor plan is comprised of many projects that are in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And so the goal is to see about studying these projects to see which make more strategic sense to potentially fund. So if a project wants to have SB $1, if they apply for SB $1, it needs to be in this plan. So it's important that any project through Woodland be in that plan. So this project, 5-5 Managed Lane, is on that plan, and it extends from the 550 interchange all the way through past the airport and will end at the Sacramento River. It adds managed lanes, one in each direction. It's going to widen the freeway to add transition lanes at various locations, specifically between the airport and 99 and Arena. We're going to pave the median and install median concrete barrier. We're going to have multiple ramp meters added as well as some modified. We're going to be widening some ramps to make room for additional capacity to store traffic to merge on the freeway, and we're going to widen various bridges. Of course, we'll need to rehabilitate or modify the drainage system that runs in the freeway with this widening. We'll incorporate integrated corridor management strategies, working with RT now on preemptive ramp metering. And we're, we'll study bike pedestrian crossing over the American River Bridge. So what is a managed lane? There's different types of managed lanes. One that you, we, you may be most familiar with is a carpool lane, also known as an HOV or high occupancy vehicle lane. It allows access to vehicles that meet the minimum occupancy requirements, two or more people is what is standard. And it restricts access to vehicles that do not meet the minimum occupancy requirement. There, another type of managed lane is the HOT or High Occupancy Toll. It allows free access to vehicles that meet the minimum occupancy requirement, two or more vehicles per occupancy, for instance, and it allows priced access to vehicles that do not meet the minimum occupancy requirement. So if a person wanted to use a HOT lane, and they only had one person in the car, then they could pay a toll to use that lane. A third type of express lane is one where all users can use and, and pay a toll. Both the HOT and the express lane can also be priced depending on traffic. So if there's lots of congestion, the price of the toll may be higher. If there's little or no congestion, it may be little to, to no, no toll. Wanted to point out, you know, the, one of the benefits of tolling is, you know, currently we have HOV lanes that are used during peak hour. Not all of our lanes within Sacramento area are used to their full capacity. A, a toll lane would allow people with less than the minimum requirement to use it for a price. So, and to allow for traffic to continue moving through, through traffic. So what are the benefits of a managed lane? A managed lane delivers more reliable travel time for users. Okay? So this is made possible by occupancy restrictions or by charging tolls. Managed lanes are designed to keep vehicle speeds above 40 miles per hour. So the whole idea is to reduce congestion, no stop and go, free flow of traffic. So managed lanes move more people than general purpose lanes because the capacity is maximized by managing the access to the lane, much like the diagram I showed you in the previous slide. Carpools are encouraged because they lead to more reliable travel times. Vehicle emissions are lowered, so we have cleaner air, and drivers can save money by carpooling. So we have been working on the I-5 Managed Lane Project for a little over a year and been doing traffic analysis. We're nearly done getting, getting that done. We're going to utilize the study to help us guide which type of managed lane is most strategic on the I-5 corridor. There are seven alternatives. I'm going to walk you through some diagrams to clearly show you what these alternatives are. The first, of course, is a no build. We analyze to see, you know, what current conditions are today and then what they would be out in 2048. So the alternatives that I'm going to walk you through are broken up into three cross-sections. They're just three different segments within the corridor itself. The top one starts at the I-5 US-50 interchange to the Garden Highway, and the middle cross-section is from the Garden Highway to State Route 99. And then the third segment is from State Route 99 to the Sacramento River. As you can see, the geometric configuration of each segment is, is unique. So adding a managed lane, our second alternative is to add a carpool lane, one in each direction. Between I-5 and US-50 to the Garden Highway, we will restrike the freeway to add an additional lane. From the Garden Highway to State Route 99, we will widen the median. Likewise, from State Route 99 to the Sacramento River, we plan to completely pave the median and, and have a carpool lane. So the HOT occupancy toll configuration is similar to the HOV. Again, it, the managed lane would be told. Two people or less would be free, two or more would be charged a toll. We're looking to see, you know, what we would get if we ask that more people right in the car and, and not pay, to try to reduce vehicle miles traveled, try to get people out of their cars into carpools. So we'll, we'll see what that analysis will, will provide. And the fifth alternative is an express lane where there is no minimum requirement. All, all users, except for trucks, can use the managed lane for, for a price. And our alternative six is exclusively for transit. So again, you know, let's see about getting more people out of their cars and utilizing transit. We'll see what our analysis shows once we complete it. And alternative seven is, is unique in that we're proposing to not widen or restrike. We would just repurpose an existing lane to a managed lane, in this case, an HOV 2+. So between the I-5 50 interchange to Garden Highway, we would just restrike the number one lane, the inside lane closest to the, the median barrier. And likewise, from Garden Highway to Southbound Arena and, and the northbound direction to the El Paso Road. So we would end this conversion of a general purpose lane to a carpool lane at Arena and, and El Paso, depending on the direction. In this alternative, we would not convert any lanes between 99 and the Sacramento River. There, there's two lanes existing, and so we would like to maintain that, that capacity there. As far as the project estimate, depending on how many bridges we widen and whether we widen to the outside as well, we have a range of 200 million to 500 million dollars. Project milestones, we're looking to complete the environmental document by this coming February 2022, and then we would get straight into design. Depending on, again, the, the number of bridges we widen, the amount of work that we do to add this managed lane, you know, we anticipate that the worst condition, we would complete the design in 2024. Also, this project is not fully funded, so we are applying for funds, and, and so that may push out the, the design complete date as well. So we're planning to start construction in, in spring of 2025 if all the stars align. So I've gone over the comprehensive multimodal corridor plan, shared with you the SAC 5 Managed Lane Project and what a managed lane is and its benefits, and I've gone through the alternatives, and, and this is a price tag and, and the schedule. And so if you have any questions, you could certainly contact myself or Dennis Keaton, who is our public information officer. So that concludes my presentation. I, I'm open for any questions you might have. Mr. Mayor, I believe you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Avila. That was a stimulating presentation about a, a situation which is of growing concern to all of us who travel the I-5 corridor. So I'll open it to questions from my colleagues first. Is there anyone who wishes to ask a question about this proposal?
Mayor, I have my hand up.
I see that, Mr. Mr. Lansburg, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Avila. I have a question for you. If the president gets this infrastructure bill passed through Congress, would this help speed up this process a little bit?
It, it would certainly help fund it. Of course, we don't know all of the guidelines, but we're certainly wanting to prepare ourselves for any potential funding that may become available. That is why we're, we're trying to hold our February 2022 day of completing our environmental document, getting our project closer to shovel-ready, if you will, in, in order to apply it for any funds that may, may become available. We are continuously looking for any local, state, or federal grants that are available. You know, this job is, is, this project is, is underway due to SECOD. We applied for funding through SECOD and got some money to start our environmental process. We've applied to the INFRA grant, it's a federal grant. We're looking to see if we might qualify for a bill and maybe applying for that as well. And of course, we're looking to set ourselves up to apply for the next cycle of SB 1 funding, which will be, they'll have a call for project sometime next year. So really critical that we complete our environmental documents so that we could, you know, get some of that money as well as any federal dollars that may come through the infrastructure program that the current administration is program that the current administration is working on.
Thank you, Mr. Travel.
I'll jump in with a couple of questions. You talked about a an additional lane being constructed between the Onrappet at the airport, heading towards downtown Sacramento and the ninety nine exit. Is that going to happen regardless, or is that part of one of the seven options?
Well, a- as far as the auxiliary lanes that would be built between the airport and ninety nine, we actually were fortunate in receiving some SB one dollars for constructing auxiliary lanes. So we're we're working on that as a child project separate from this managed lane project here. And and so that money is going to become available in in July. So we you will see some relief, some congestion relief in that segment, especially going southbound on I five past the airport. Believe me, I have family and still have family in Woodland and and travel to Woodland frequently and and coming back. I've been stuck in that traffic all the way out to the to the one thirteen. And so it really needs some traffic operational improvements there, which this project that has received SB one funds, trade corridor improvement program funds, you you're going to see that, you know, start up sometime in in twenty twenty two. So also looking for all the development that that is going on in the area there. These auxiliary lanes will help for the merging of these trucks that are slow to speed up and slow to slow down. So with these auxiliary lanes, where the the outcome is less congestion at the airport and more free flow traffic for commuters from Woodland to Sacramento and vice versa.
Thank you. I really appreciate hearing that. That's absolutely exceptional news. People get on a County Road one oh two and they're immediately in a stopped situation because of the backup. And I'm told by your district director, Mr. Benny Paul, that there's so much traffic going on five from the airport that is backing the traffic up across the causeway. So if if we have this money now and can have this solution in the short term, I know that will be appreciated by the people who live and work in Woodland. So thank you very much for that. My next question is, you you talked about seven options, but you have no preconceptions. That's the purpose of the study that you're about to begin. Is that correct?
Right, and we're we're near completing our our traffic operational analysis. You know, and we're we're studying all the different alternatives that I went over. And and so, you know, un- until we get the analysis, we won't know, you know, which one is 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 going to win over the other, if you will, which one would be the most strategic type of managed lane i- in this corridor. So, you know, we'll we'll see. We will be having, our plan is to to have a a circulation of the environmental document that would, you know, lay out the outcomes of the study in August of this year. So if all goes well, you know, you'll get to see what the results of these of this analysis is in in August.
So let me see if I understand the process. At some point in time, there will be a recommended op- alternative, and that will generate an EIR process. Would that be correct?
We're we're currently actually working on the environmental impact report now, looking at all of the impacts that, you know, widening the freeway would be, what the traffic operational analysis and how that might affect, you know, the studies. That's left to be seen because we're not done yet. But we're we we are aggressively trying to complete all of the environmental studies that are part of the EIR so that we can have this document circulated in August.
Right, I'm I'm certainly, my speaking for myself, I'm open to these options, and I'm glad you're going to look at all of them. And the core goal is to allow the traffic to move freely, and also we want to encourage transit. We understand that. So that's great. I know you're also doing traffic counts in various areas. What do you think will be the impact of any of these solutions once you hit hit the Vietnam Memorial Bridge and everybody goes down to two lanes continuing across the causeway? Do you have any concerns about that creating a a slowdown and a, you know, going from three or four lanes to two?
Yeah, that that's a very good question. So my understanding is, in discussing this with the traffic engineers, is that a a large part of the traffic goes to the airport and or to the Amazon. And so you have, of course, the the commute and then trucks that that pass through. So if you have a free flow happening where the congestion are, you know, Arena Boulevard, SR ninety nine and and the airport, if we stop that stop and go, then the the idea is we'll have more free flow traffic. And and so y- you won't have that traveling north to to Woodland from Sacramento.
I would respectfully say that in so many ways, I five north of the river is actually a one lane highway because there are so much truck traffic nowadays. It's a major corridor, as you know, on the entire West Coast of the country. And an enormous amount of trucks are moving up and down there from places, not just Amazon, but Walmart and and others that it's a it's a pretty limited roadway for the amount of demand on it. So have you given consideration to the need to perhaps consider the widening north of the river?
Yeah, that that is certainly true what you say a- as far as a truck traffic goods movement and of course trying to, you know, work with that so that we get goods and services where they need to go without impeding them. And so I brought up initially the comprehensive multimodal corridor plan, which will be comprised of projects that are in the metropolitan transportation plan. And the that that plan will analyze the corridor from the San Joaquin County line all the way out to Route sixteen. It's going to be comprised of of projects. Now, it's important that if there is any plans for widening the causeway and or the Sacramento River Bridge, that they they be on that that plan. But the point is, is that it will be analyzed to see what projects will, you know, keep traffic moving. And and so that that plan is underway. It's anticipated to be completed later this year, early next year. And and so the hope is that, you know, partnership of of all of the local agencies that are taking part i- in that plan will be able to apply for for projects. And of course, you know, the 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 ones that go to the top that would reduce congestion either way would would be the ones that would be supported to move on to to funding. So it's important that there's partnership. The California Transportation Commission looks for that. And we've been very successful in collaborating with other local agencies and receiving funds, much like this project, splinter project that I I mentioned to you that will build auxiliary lanes. We went in partnership with the airport and with PCTPA, the Budget County Transportation Authority. And we got this 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 grant because we went together a- as as a as a team to fund a project that is meant for trade. So like you said, there's a lot of trucks. So again, partnerships are important, and the comprehensive multimodal corridor plan will help help us decide which projects are more strategic to keep people moving up and down the I five corridor.
I do appreciate that that explanation. Clearly, the section you're working on is is most significant. But I five north of the river is now about fifty years old, including the Vietnam Memorial Bridge. So I think it's certainly time that it gets attention as well, possibly connecting the two bridges so that we get additional lane over the river as one solution. And the kind of infrastructure dollars we're likely to see in the near future may be unprecedented for a long period of time to come. Moving on, I have one final area of inquiry, and then I'll certainly pass back to my colleagues if they have additional questions. And that is Interstate eighty is is about to go through a a major redo as well. Certainly, the lane reductions in Davis create a lot of congestion. The causeway is is jammed a lot. And any kind of work there is going to automatically send a lot of traffic to Woodland up one thirteen. And if the drivers themselves don't automatically do it, they're all listening to their GPS devices that are going to send them up our way. And as you know, we do not have flyover connectors between one thirteen and I five in certain directions. What kind of planning is going on at Caltrans to protect our community from basically going to level service F at our East Main Street where the one thirteen I five area converges?
Well, with respect to the Interstate eighty and through Davis, as Brent mentioned, I I was a project manager on the Yolo eighty managed lanes, and somebody else has taken over because it needs a lot of attention, and so it can't be split in half. So it is following a parallel route with this project and applying for the same funds as this I five project. As far as a one thirteen five is concerned, you know, we recently had a a focus meeting with with Brent and noted that, in fact, you know, the connector ramps that you mentioned at the five thirteen interchange are in the MTP, are being considered in the CMCP. And and again, you know, once the analysis is is done, then, you know, where are the areas where it would be most strategic to fund, to help congestion up and down the corridor? So it it's left to be seen, you know, how that pans out. So until the 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 plan is complete and it's embedded, then we'll we'll have a better idea in terms of, you know, where is the next area that needs to have some attention and funding to move projects forward?
Mr. Avila, the the connectors between one thirteen and five have been on the SAICOG agenda now for over twenty years. Part of the original projects of regional significance and of all every project on that list, it is the only one that ever got completed. And we know they're expensive, but they could be less expensive if Caltrans would accept a single lane flyover as opposed to a two lane. Has is that being discussed? Because we brought that po- concern up pri- previously, as you may know.
You know, I I I know a little bit of what what has transpired. I certainly know that this project you mentioned has been in the books for a while. It it it's kind of a standing project in our quarterly status meetings for discussion. And and it all comes down to funding, right? And 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 justifying it. And so that that's why, again, stressing how important it is to, you know, jump on the bandwagon, bandwagon, if you will, and and support the CMCP so that projects such as this one gets on, gets on a priority and receives funding.
Well, you know, we really would love to partner with you on any kind of solution to get those in place. I mean, you may think Woodland at sixty thousand people is actually in the upper third California cities population wise. We're actually number one fifty seven. But it's not just us. We have limited options in getting around in our region when when something like an Interstate eighty closure occurs, which has happened two or three times in recent years due to a a freeway incidence. So that all that traffic ends up coming up here, and it's just overwhelming. And nowadays, with so much traffic being diverted here anyway because of people listening to their GPS, we we need to think of some some way to keep that traffic moving. We also have trucks exiting at Gibson Road off of one thirteen and and moving through basically a neighborhood area to avoid East Main Street. So this is a serious problem in this community. We only see it getting worse with the passing of time. Would you agree?
I empathize. You know, traveling back from from the Bay Area on Interstate eighty and, you know, my my ways tell me that you don't want to go that way. And then realizing, well, you can't go on I five either. And and then you've got, you know, the county road that that parallels I five. And and so I completely understand. I've been there. And certainly, you know, it's a motivation for me to continue working in this in in this field to bring some solutions. I I realize it's a slow process, some more than others. And and again, it's just keeping on it. And, you know, right now, the CMCP is 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 where to be. So, you know, hopefully here i- in the next year or two that something might come of it.
Well, I thank you for your kind and polite responses. And I can only urge you to continue to enter into dialogue with us from time to time as this project proceeds because obviously our interests are are vital in this as well. Colleagues, do any of the rest of you have additional questions of Mr. Avila? If not, I'd like to invite Brent Meyer, our our community development officer, to ask any additional questions he may have. Oh, excuse me. Did I miss someone?
Excuse me.
I see Vicky Fernandez, Councilwoman Fernandez, has her hand up. Go ahead, Vicky.
Hi, I just wanted to thank you for giving us an overview of the of the options that are being considered. My one question is very brief. You said that the start date of construction is for Genie five. My question is, how long do you foresee the timeframe for these if any of these projects to to take? Since it will impact traffic going through Woodland, what would be the timeframe for the entire construction phase?
Right, so for for the project that's that's, you know, more more i- in the works to get out sooner, the auxiliary lanes, that is going to be about a a year and a half or so, so a season and a half. The larger project, maybe up to two seasons. If we were to do more work, say, on the American River, it would take a little longer. But certainly in terms of keeping traffic going during the day, you know, maintaining the number of lanes of traffic that 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 are existing three through and three through lanes, up to State Route ninety nine and then two to the river is what we would do during construction. So all the work would happen evening. Yes, there may be an occasion where we need to net the lanes down a little more. But for the most part, during the day and especially during peak hours, we would keep the number of lanes that are existing available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez. This is so important that I would like to make sure that if our staff has any questions as well, that they have an opportunity to ask them. So, Mr. Meyer, do you have any remaining questions at this time?
No, I think you covered most of it. I think just point of emphasis is that we want to continue work with Caltrans on seeing if we can reduce the cost of the five one thirteen connector project. And so I know we've had some meetings in the past about reducing it from two lanes to one lane. You know, as Jess talked about earlier, you know, the focus is on, you know, we just have limited funds. And so, you know, what we need to do is is do everything we can to make projects less expensive. So I think just the only thing I'd add is just continue to work together on.
I'd respectfully suggest this is a time when we need to make these asks because there may be more money available than ever been the case in recent years. And this is an extraordinary project. It's going to take a fairly significant amount of funding. So let's let's move it to the front burner and work on some, okay? Okay, Brent?
Sounds good.
Have Mr. Manager, did you have any comments or questions on this issue?
No, I think I think most of the questions I have been answered, maybe only one for Mr. Avila. And that is, I presume, given the two districts at play here on on I eighty as well as I five, that any coordination of construction occurring on both the five and eighty corridors will be well thought out, so we're not significantly impacting flow of traffic during the construction phase for those two, since we're going after the same dollars it sounds like. for those two, since we're going after the same dollars, it sounds like.
That's right. And the strategy for maintaining traffic during construction on Interstate eighty is the same as I five. So granted, you know, there is that pinch point that's existing. So that'll continue until such time that an additional lane is constructed. But in terms of coordinating the construction of the two projects, that's something that District Three strives to do to make sure that, you know, we're not affecting one project over the other. And or, you know, if that would be the case, how is it that we would mitigate that? So yes, point well taken and something that we would be considering.
All right. Mr. Avila, I hope you'll accept our gratitude for coming tonight and for sharing with us this exciting opportunity to try to make the I five corridor a better corridor for all of us. So thank you so much. We hope, again, to hear from you at another stage of this process.
Yeah. Thank you very much for having me, Mr. Meyer. Good night.
Good night. All right. We have a second presentation this evening, and that is Valley Clean Energy Update. I'm pleased that our General Manager Mitch Sears is here. Mr. Manager, did you wish to make an introduction?
Yeah, just a real brief one. So Mitch Sears, the General Manager for Valley Clean Energy, has been kind enough to offer to each of their participating agencies, of which Yolo County, Woodland, Davis, now Winters, are part of Valley Clean Energy to provide an update to our constituents in the council relative to Valley Clean Energy's current status and some of the issues that we're grappling with relative to ever-changing legislation, but also look towards the future and what Valley Clean Energy promises in terms of cleaner energy and better rates for our customers here in town.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I might also mention that Mayor Pro Tem Vega and myself are the Valley Clean Energy representatives for the city of Woodland. With that, Mr. Sears.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to provide the presentation tonight. Ken pretty much covered everything. So if there's any questions, of course, I'm kidding. I'll spend a little bit of time going through some basics around CCAs, but also focus on a strategic plan that the BCE Board Directors adopted back in December. One thing I do want to emphasize, just coming on the heels of the last presentation, clearly, you know, traffic, traffic planning are critical, they're critical local decisions. And one of the things that Valley Clean Energy, along with other CCAs in the state of California now are doing, is bringing that kind of critical analysis and local decision-making into the process when decisions are being made about energy, both at the statewide level, the regional level, and at the local level. So I'll focus a little bit on that this evening as well. So I think am I to share my screen? Okay. All right. So, like I said, we've got a couple of slides here. I'll try to move through them very, you know, as quickly as practical. Hopefully leaving a little bit of time for some questions. So just very generally, for those council members who were not around at the time that Valley Clean Energy was formed back in twenty eighteen, Valley Clean Energy is a community choice aggregation program. It's enabled by state law that was passed back in two thousand and two. It's created by and for local communities. So the original members of Valley Clean Energy were Yolo County, City of Davis, and City of Woodland. It is a not-for-profit joint powers authority, so JPA, meaning that the revenues that come into the organization are are programmed and go to pay power bills and keep the organization running and to return value back to the local communities. It is locally controlled. The Board of Directors of Valley Clean Energy are made up of two members, each of the city councils and the Board of Supervisors. So right now I have a board of eight members. As Tom mentioned, he and Lyra are on the Board of Directors. Importantly, CCAs in general, and Valley Clean Energy specifically, provide competition that benefits customers. It's the first time really that there's been competition in the energy sector in an organized way. And the bottom line for Valley Clean Energy is that we offer more renewables at exactly the same cost as PGNE. So we'll get into that a little bit more as we go through the slide deck. Valley Clean Energy's mission is to provide clean electricity, product choice, greenhouse gas emission reductions with local control at competitive prices. So those are really important sort of guiding guidelines that the board set up at its very first meeting back in twenty, well, late twenty seventeen. So again, just a little bit of background on how a CCA works, community choice aggregation. As I mentioned, it was enabled by AB one one seven back in two thousand and two. And basically, we're aggregating up the generation electricity demand of our customers. And it is an opt-out program, so everyone is opted in under state law, but does have the ability to opt out and stay with the investor on utility, in this case PGNE. The diagram here at the bottom shows the basic function. So Valley Clean Energy here on the left-hand side sources the energy. We have a mixture of energy sources, wind, solar, a little bit of local hydroelectric, some large hydroelectricity also from the Northwest. In this model, PGNE continues to own and operate the lines and wires and transformers. So all the infrastructure stays with PGNE. Again, BCE only deals with the generation side of your bill. PGNE continues to deal with the transmission distribution side of the electricity bill. And the customer receives BCE's energy through PGNE. So really, it's kind of a seamless approach. And the next slide shows the uptake here in California. So community choice aggregation is about ten years old in the state. There's really been a groundswell here in the last couple of years. And as of now, there are twenty-three active community choice aggregation programs in California, twelve of which are in PGNE service territory. Again, looking at just the generation side of the bill, those twelve CCAs in PGNE service territory are serving about half of PGNE's load that they used to serve. So it really is a it really is something that's proved to be very popular. There are more than eleven million customers across the state that are being served right now. Overall, about one quarter of California's electricity is delivered through one of these programs. There are many other cities and counties that are actively considering their own CCA programs. If you look here in sort of the northern part of the state, you see a big blue blob here. That's that's Butte County. We've actually been advising Butte County on their formation of a community choice aggregation program. Again, they want to, like many of these others, want to have a local, say, local voice in their energy and how it's generated and how it's delivered. CALCCA is our statewide association of CCAs, a group that is very productive, I should say, and in both legislative and regulatory settings. And Valley Clean Energy just joined another joint powers agency, which is a community power JPA formed of a number of CCAs. What that will allow us to do is more effectively negotiate for large-scale renewable contracts and battery storage. So for Valley Clean Energy, our service territory is, as I mentioned, Woodland, Davis, Winters, and the unincorporated portions of Yolo County. The only portion of the county that doesn't, isn't served by BCE currently is West Sacramento. We have about sixty-one and a half thousand customer accounts, seven hundred and fifty gigawatt hour annual load. This profile here shows, these bullet points show a little bit about Valley Clean Energy. So we do have a relatively high poverty rate here in our service territory. We have a high proportion of our load is in agricultural production, not surprisingly, about fifteen percent. About sixteen percent of our customers are rooftop solar or NEM customers. That's one of the highest penetration rates in the entire state. So that's something to be proud of. And it does, it does provide us with opportunities and challenges. About, as I mentioned, it's an opt-out program. About ninety-one percent of our customers, of the eligible customers, are Valley Clean Energy customers. So we have a opt-out rate overall of about nine percent. That's pretty good when you compare us to other CCAs. We are the only, as I mentioned here, the only Central Valley-based CCA program. So we're operating in a unique climate zone as well as a unique sort of customer base. But as I mentioned, also, we're interested in trying to advance the community choice aggregation model here in Central Valley. Just one other quick note here at the bottom. I know, I know Tom Meyer are proud that we paid our startup funding, our seed funding from the local jurisdictions. We paid it off with interest early within a year and a half of our launch. We also partner with SMUD. They provide our back office services. And we were able to pay off their startup deferrals on time that was completed last year. One of the big things that we're able to do is recapture and repurpose some of the funds that would otherwise be flowing out of our communities. So on this slide, we talk a little bit about what some of the benefits of Valley Clean Energy are. As I mentioned, we provide competition in the electricity sector. We do offer competitive pricing and a higher renewable content. We offer local control and reinvestment. So with that local control, as I mentioned, there's now a local voice in the energy sector where it didn't exist before in any kind of organized way. We are engaged in discussions at the statewide level, including grid reliability. I know that our service territory, including Woodland, was hit pretty hard last year during some of the PSPS events and the outages due to the windstorm. That's when Valley Clean Energy, though we don't have control over the distribution system, were able to engage with PGNE through channels that are different than what some of our local governments are able to do. So that's an added benefit. We have secured over three hundred thousand dollars of workforce and sustainability investment over the next ten years. Get some of our long-term power contract negotiations. So that's local investment. We are doing and have run a request for offers, which was successful, resulting in two local solar plus battery storage generation projects here in Yolo County. The first is located near Winters, scheduled to start delivering power later on this year. The second is, is west of Woodland, near Sparta. That's in negotiations right now. Again, sort of bringing those dollars and jobs back to our community. We were also successful in applying for and partnering with the cities and the county on a almost three hundred thousand dollar electric vehicle infrastructure grant from SAICOG that's being deployed right now. The Board of Directors has, the BCE Board of Directors has identified and allocated a dedicated local funding source, a reserve, for energy-related programs like energy efficiency in some of our under-resourced or lower-resourced parts of our community and service territory. And originally, we did launch with a two and a half percent rate discount, which saved our customers about five hundred thousand dollars. At this point in time, because of some of the regulatory and market conditions, we're unable to offer that discount right now. But it is something that we were able to bring to our customers at launch. We're also advocating for local businesses and community interest in dealing with PGNE. For example, Woodland, we were contacted and engaged with PGNE on the carpet recycling facility that was recruited for Woodland. We believe that we had a somewhat positive impact on that. And we're also working with some of our agricultural customers and some of their dealings with PGNE. We're also assisting member cities and counties in the county with their, meaning their energy sector-related greenhouse gas reduction goals. I've been in discussions with your staff about what some of those priorities are. And we're looking forward to working more here in the future. Just a couple more slides here. This is our cover sheet from our strategic plan. So it was a three-year plan that was adopted by our board, as I mentioned, back in December of this year. That plan was under development for nine months and was approved by our Board of Directors unanimously back in November. The plan covers finance, procurement, how we outreach to our customers and community, what the decarbonization and grid innovation objectives of BCE should be. We get into statewide issues, regulatory and legislative primarily. And then we also touch on how BCE is organized and how it, how it can be run, how we look towards the future and what our organization looks like. Some of the highlights from the strategic plan are a study to look at a hundred percent net carbon neutral by twenty thirty or a hundred percent carbon free hour by hour by twenty thirty. So this is in keeping with some of the state objectives and is in alignment with some of the greenhouse gas emission reductions and climate action plans that our, that our communities have. We are in the process of developing roadmaps for decarbonization, resilience and reliability in the service, in BCE service territory. So again, engaging where we can be effective on making sure that that our business partners here in our service territory get timely responses from PGNE on service hookups, but also looking at the reliability of the overall grid here in our service territory and encouraging, like, much like you did with Caltrans a few minutes ago, encouraging them to prioritize projects that help our communities be more resilient and recover more quickly from power outages. We are in the process, we have a community advisory committee made up of three members from each of our member jurisdictions. In that way, we're helping expand community expertise and input into a decision-making process around energy. We are focused, and the board made it a point to focus on engagement with historically emerging disadvantaged communities, along with local businesses and agricultural customers. And finally, the board gave us direction to work towards achieving an investment-grade credit rating so that we can be more effective and even more efficient in negotiating our power purchase contracts. So finally, some of the key activities that BCE is engaged in right now. As you may be aware, the city of Winters enrollment began in twenty, in January of this year. And that is continuing. We are procuring long-term renewables and energy storage to meet the demand as well as make the grid more reliable going forward. We are developing, as I mentioned, the local programs plan so that we can bring some of the benefits back to our member communities. As I mentioned, we're developing these roadmaps that will help direct BCE going forward. We are working on legislation, SB six twelve, Senator Portentino's bill. This addresses some of the exit fees that, that BCE and other CCAs face. Essentially, that is, there are resources that our customers are paying for that are in the PGNE portfolio that we're not giving credit for. So that's what that bill addresses. We're also engaged on regulatory proceedings. They seem to be sort of a never-ending sort of treadmill at the Public Utilities Commission around those, but we have a good team along with CALCCA built up to address those. So with that, I'll go ahead. There is a number of reference slides here that we included in the in the information we sent over to staff, touches on some of the other items and issues in a little bit more detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very. Thank you very much, Mr. Sears. Are there questions of Mitch Sears from any member of the council? I'm not seeing any hands up, so please speak up if I'm missing. Rich Landsberg has a question. Go ahead, Councilman Landsberg.
Sears, can you go back over that Portentino bill? I actually got lost in that. How does that, how does that affect, say, a customer like me who has solar panels and et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, good question. So if you're a net energy metering customer, rooftop solar customer, Bill would treat NEM customers and non-NEM customers equally. Essentially, what happens is this power charge indifference adjustment is is above-market cost that the investor on utility. is, is above-market cost that the investor in utilities, in our case PG&E, negotiated for power contracts years ago. So these are the legacy contracts. They were relatively expensive. And so when one of our customers leaves PG&E to join Valley Clean Energy, along with the, along with the generation costs that we procure for, this exit fee goes to pay PG&E back and their customers to make them indifferent to our customers leaving. Now, because of market conditions, and I would argue our efficiency in negotiating contracts, we're actually able to procure power for roughly twenty-five to thirty percent less than PG&E did historically. Along with that, but this, this exit fee or PCA charge sort of makes up for that difference. So our customers end up paying an equal amount. The issue is not so much the, the cost to our customers, but that our customers are paying for those legacy resources. And the way that the Public Utilities Commission set up the formula for the PCA charge, we're not getting all of the, the attributes that go along with those. So for example, if there's a solar power contract that's in that legacy portfolio that PG&E holds on to, our customers pay for that legacy contract, a proportional share of that. But the solar, the renewable energy credits don't necessarily flow to Valley Clean Energy or to our customer. So there's a value that's left on the table. It's a fairness issue fundamentally. So what will end up happening is if that bill is approved, that there will be additional resources that Valley Clean Energy will have available to it so that we don't have to go out and procure that energy or that attribute twice, essentially. So we'll have more revenue and resources to be able to run programs, to be able to return some of that, potentially return some of that revenue back to customers. Right now, we don't have a clear view because of some of the data transparency issues that we have with the investor in utilities. We don't know the amount that that would add up to, but it's not insignificant. And so, for example, I'll just give you a, throughout the number, this year alone, in PG&E service territory alone, that PCA charge, if you collect it all together, is about one point five billion dollars. So that's above-market cost that they negotiated for. Some of that value should be flowing back to our customers, and that's what six eight, six twelve does. So I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but as a MEM customer, it won't impact you differently than it would impact any other VCE customer.
Thank you, Mitch. And, and Rich, frankly, it's a pretty complicated subject area. I've had to learn about it and be happy to talk one-on-one at some point if you wish.
It sounds very complicated, but I'm glad Mitch is on it.
Yes, and we have, this council, in a, in a recent council meeting, did send a letter of support for Mr. Portentino's bill.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mitch Sears, Councilmember Pro Tem Vega?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Stollard. Mitch, thank you so much for your presentation. I did want to mention to community members, I have had residents reach out to me and just understanding their, their bill and understanding what Valley Clean Energy does for them and for our community. So Mitch, I just wanted to say thank you to the customer service team. They've done a phenomenal job from the feedback that I've gotten and explaining to customers this very, very complicated subject. So I do appreciate that, and I want to encourage the community to reach out if they have any questions that are specific to their individual circumstances. So that'll be on Mayor Stollard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Vega. Additional questions? Please speak up because I can't see everybody's picture. All right, I would like to add my thanks to that of my colleagues, Mitch, to you and the team at Valley Clean Energy. We're three years down the road now, and I think we've accomplished some pretty remarkable things in that three years. We still are on the road. We're going to make a lot more progress as we go forward. And we'll get through some of these tougher issues like the indifference charge that you spoke of earlier. So thank you so much for joining us this evening. Was there any member of the public that had a question on this issue? Madam Clerk?
No, no, Mayor Stollard.
All right.
I'm sorry, I couldn't get my mute off there quick enough. Do you mind?
Councilmember Garcia Cadena, please proceed.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sears. This is a lot of really important information. I'm wondering if it would be possible for a representative from Valley Clean Energy to participate in maybe some community activities that we have going. City of Woodland is going to be doing a large presentation in, or not presentation, celebration in October. And because so many people do have questions, I think this would be a great opportunity to reach a lot of people in our, in our area so they can get their questions answered.
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're really, we, we love coming to the communities that we serve. One of our favorites was the, was the Honey Festival, and we've missed coming to that this past year. We, I think we've attended each one of those as well as a couple of other festivals in, in Woodland. You guys do a great job on community events downtown. And I can speak personally to some of the community, to the assets, the Woodland Opera House is amazing. My, both my children have benefited from that, from that facility. And I'm proud of our team, our outreach team, and I think they do a great job. Thank you for the invitation. We will absolutely take you by mind.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Sears is also a member of the Opera House Guild on tears there, so thank you for that, Mitch. Appreciate it. All right, I think we've heard from everybody, and there's no member of the community with questions. Thanks, Mitch. Keep up the good work for all of us, please.
Thank you.
All right. That, that concludes presentations this evening. That allows us to move on to our consent calendar, items four through twelve. Is there any item on the consent calendar that any member of the council wishes to comment upon or to remove from the consent calendar for further discussion? And if you can't get that hand signal on, just raise your hand physically so I, I can see it. I'm not, I'm not seeing any hands raised. So is there any member of the public that has a comment on any item on the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
No, I don't see anyone.
All right, then this would be the time for a member of the council to propose a motion, please.
Mayor Stollard.
Member Fernandez would like to make a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll take the, I'll take the motion from Councilmember Fernandez, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem, Myra Vega. Is there further discussion on the consent calendar? There being none?
Mayor Stollard, I, I do have a discussion.
Oh, yes, please.
On one of the items, yes. So the Community Services Department Quarterly Status Report, item five. I, first of all, I, I very much enjoy seeing these, these reports and seeing those participant hours ticking up and just seeing all the activities in the community that are happening. I, I did want to encourage Christine and, and team to, to take a look at some of the hours of operation that our program, our programs are offering at this time with the, the, I guess, I don't know if there is such a thing as a, as a traditional work schedule. Things are changing and evolving. Places of, of work are changing as we speak. So just having some conversations with residents around the availability of some of the programs, the length of the programs. So just want to encourage that we keep a, a close connection with the community to ensure that our programs are meeting the, the needs of the ever-evolving schedules of our, our families in the community. That'll be all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. As I heard you in a recent conversation, it's important that we have programs that extend long enough for parents who have to work full day to be able to collect their children appropriate time. Otherwise, they're essentially excluded from those programs. Would that be a correct assessment of your concern? I would share that. Thank you. Okay, so that's further, is there any additional discussion on the consent calendar? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Vega?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Aye.
Mayor Stollard?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The consent calendar is concluded. Thank you all. And that extends, thanks extends to our city staff who prepare the reports on all these items as well. Thank you so much. So we move on now to item H, Reports of the City Manager. And this is our weekly opportunity to hear what's the latest on COVID response preparedness in the community. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this week's update will be fairly brief. I think we all celebrated collectively last week, significant milestone with the reopening of the schools. And in talking with the superintendent this morning, it sounds like the first week went fairly smoothly. With the exception of just a few cases that popped up at various campuses. For the most part, schools have presumed as anticipated, and they continue to, you know, implement very strict protocols. So continue to hopefully see schools continue to operate through the balance of the school year without significant spread. On a community-wide basis, our case rates remain stable. So positive news continues there with, you know, the average daily case rate hovering just around twenty. Hospitalizations, though, have seen a slight uptick over the last week compared to the prior week, but still significant capacity at, at the hospitals for ICU beds. So we'll be watching that closely as the county health officer now reports that the most dominant case showing up in tests is the UK variant, which as we've probably all heard by now, is a much more contagious and often deadly strain and tracking globally, right, what's happening with, with other regions throughout the globe. So as we look forward with some optimism, right, there's always caution underlying all of that as we, you know, move towards hopefully a yellow tier in, in the May timeframe, which based on our current case rates, probably the earliest we could be in a position to, to be in that tier would be mid-May. But again, continue to encourage folks to be very vigilant as they go about their daily lives and do not, you know, get complacent in their masking and distancing and whatnot. And then lastly, the joint letter that both the city council and the trustees of the school district authored has been now signed by almost all representatives. So we'll be pushing out later this week a joint communication to the community around that. So that concludes this week's update. I'll turn it back to the council for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions from the council? I see Mayor Pro Tem Vega, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Stollard. City Manager, I have a question around the testing and the discussions with, with Healthy Davis. I, my son participates in wrestling and they require testing to be done. And they had, they directed families to go to Davis. And the turnaround time is very surprising. I think we've got a response within a day. So I was wondering if there are any additional conversations around bringing that up a testing to our community. Just thinking about families that have a hardship in transportation and.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. In fact, that was a topic brought up with superintendent yesterday. As I understand it, as of yesterday, the Healthy Davis Together program and the Woodland Joint Unified School District are preparing to transition that asymptomatic testing program to the school system, starting first with the teachers. So it sounds like by mid-May, teachers will have access to this testing with immediately following thereafter, students then being able to access this testing platform and bringing that, that program here to our community, starting with the schools. The longer-term sort of expansion of that on a countywide basis to general residents is still continuing. There's a desire, of course, to figure out how to, you know, deliver that program. There are significant resources needed to, to do that, both from a staffing standpoint, but also just being able to, to process that sheer number of tests. But that is still on the horizon and the objective, and potentially by, by fall, we might be in that position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions of the manager? I'm not hearing any. Is any member of the public propose a question, Madam Clerk?
No, I don't see anyone.
All right, thank you. But that will conclude our discussion of the COVID-19 update for this week. That brings us to the concluding item in our public session tonight. And that's the very wonderful work being done by our Woodland Sesquicentennial One Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary Celebration Committee, ably led by my colleagues, Councilman Landsberg and Councilwoman Garcia Cadena. Thank you both for your leadership on this, and I've just heard some exciting things are happening. So I think the staff is actually going to present the reports. Is that correct, Rich and Tanya?
I, I think that Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, both the councilwoman and I are going to give a very brief statement.
Go forward.
And, and I'll lead off, and I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just so pleased to be part of this committee who's working on the Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary of the founding of our city. The committee is putting forth and putting together a very full agenda, which will be starting up real soon, I think next May, and, and leading through the rest of the year with some pretty good, pretty nice events. And I would invite everyone in the community to join in and celebrate our Hundred and Fiftieth Year. Also, I don't want to take all the thunder from our present, presentation night, but we do have a website that is called CelebrateWoodland.org. Please take a look at it. It's evolving almost daily as part of what we're doing. Mr. Mayor, this committee has invited churches and civic organizations and youth groups throughout the community, paternal organizations, everyone, to get involved in this celebration. You'll hear a report regarding, regarding our activities planned for the rest of the year. And I'll turn it over now to my colleague, Tanya.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Landsberg. And I would like to thank all of my colleagues for allowing me to participate in this, on this committee. It's been really, really exciting. We are working with a wonderful group of community partners, both from local nonprofits and city staff. And as Councilman Landsberg noted, we've got a lot of great things coming up soon. So I would be happy to turn it over to, to Spencer, I believe, is going to give our presentation. And he can fill you in with all the great things that we have planned.
Thank you, colleagues. And Spencer Bowen is our new city communications director. So Spencer, are you on there?
I'm right here. Can everyone see my presentation?
By the way, we love that logo. That's really cool.
Yeah, well, all credit to Sam and Trista Kennedy. City staffers came up with that on, when they're not being a part of the fire and police department. So good evening, everyone. I, I think I've met most of you via Zoom, but a pleasure to be here presenting about the Celebrate Woodland One Fifty efforts, which are super exciting. So let's dive right in. Right off the bat, you know, who is involved in this? We've talked about a planning committee. As you've heard, it's led by Councilmember Landsberg and Councilmember Garcia Cadena. But there are other folks involved. We've got Jim Lapsley from the Stroll Through History, Kathy from Yolo County Historical Society, Linda from Dinner on Main, Mark Hutt from Downtown and the Daily Democrat. We've got representation from the Chamber of Commerce, Josh Hilliard and Cynthia Evans. Also, an array of city staff, Mr. Manager Ken Hyatt, with whom it appears I coordinated outfits tonight, Jen Robinson, Trista Kennedy, Sam Kennedy, Christine Engel and Greta Galindo from the library. So it's really an all-star crew, meeting once a week to make this a good celebration for our community. Event partners as well, not just, not just people, but partners in our community include Visit Woodland, the Stroll Through History, Historic Woodland Downtown Group, Woodland Chamber of Commerce, the Daily Democrat, Dinner on Main, the city's Food Front Initiative, Yolo County Historical Society, Sword Boards on Main Street, and many city departments who have already pitched in. As Rich alluded to, we've already done some initial outreach. We sent out letters to various community organizations. As Rich uh alluded to, we've already done some initial outreach. Uh, we sent out letters to various community organizations asking for them to participate in this year-long celebration, uh sort of building towards this key event on Saturday, October sixteenth. Um, interested parties can find a lot of ways they can plug in and sign up to be involved on the awesome website the Rich also mentioned, celebratewoodland.org, uh to which I will return at the end of the presentation. Um, just a sampling of some of the organizations from which we've already heard who are interested in participating are the Quanis Club, the Woodland Opera House, Seraptimus, Rotary Club, and Folklorico Latino. So what have what have we been up to? What have we been planning? Well, there's plenty to get through. Um, one of the first things you might have seen is we're soliciting submissions for the official T-shirt uh for this celebration. Submissions will be accepted through the end of May, um and there is a one hundred and fifty dollar cash prize. So circulate that in your communities. We want uh, you know, we want a community member to design a really cool T-shirt for this event. We're also inviting Woodland kids to design birthday cards celebrating Woodland's hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Um, we will display those cards also on the website, and those submissions are due June first. Something else we're really excited about is a places of interest map. The idea here is that uh Woodland residents, and even those outside of Woodland, can bike, run, walk around town, find spots of interest, uh scan a QR code with their phone and learn about why that place is important to Woodland in both English and Spanish. And we anticipate that coming online sometime this summer. Another thing you can find on the website. We're planning an array of events. Um, something coming up very soon is the Celebrate Woodland Food Week. Um, we're inviting local uh woodland restaurants to participate by featuring a menu item that has a connection to uh local produce or producers or products. Um, we invite restaurants to visit the website and sort of submit um and sign up for this food week by May third. So May third is the deadline there. We're very excited about that. Should be easy. We have a lot of kind of uh you know, existing farm-to-fork infrastructure and some great restaurants here in town. We're also really excited to partner on sort of the reawakening of First Fridays, um starting Friday, May seventh. Um, with a little bit of an expanded focus, we're thinking about art, history, music, food. Um, and we're still hammering out some details, but we really look forward to bringing, you know, live music to downtown uh in addition to some historic window displays and some uh windows downtown on Main Street. And as we've mentioned, we're building towards this sort of a capstone event on Saturday, October sixteenth. The idea is that this is a citywide event um where organizations can host uh whatever they want to at their own site um to engage and include as many community members as possible. The city will be planning and hosting a sort of capstone festival um on First Street and in the parking lot in between First all the way to Heritage Plaza and the Opera House. Again, planning is still early. You know, our fingers are crossed that by October sixteenth, um we continue our awesome public health progress, and we can host a big downtown festival. Um, but we anticipate having uh booths, for example, to showcase uh city departments and, you know, what public works looked like in eighteen seventy-one and what it looks like today, uh in addition to entertainment and vendors and stuff like that. We're also working on a a huge array of uh outreach and marketing features um that are not only super cool for this year, this calendar year effort, right, but stuff that we'll be able to hang on to and celebrate Woodland, you know, in twenty twenty-two and beyond. The committee uh is working on some videos with support from the city and Visit Yolo, uh some short features on aspects of woodland life, everything from agriculture, uh you know, to woodland youth and everything in between that uh we're very excited to share when those uh come online, probably this summer. Um, some of our awesome local food front partners, right, you've all heard, we have over a hundred and eighty local food ag uh companies here. Many of them are food processors or producers, and we're working directly with a handful of them to produce commemorative food and drink products that the woodland community can go purchase and help celebrate this really important milestone for our city. Those aren't quite ready to be shared yet, but we're super excited for the chance for folks in Woodland to buy, you know, their commemorative uh canned tomato, their commemorative uh honey, their commemorative beer from Blue Note, that sort of thing. Uh, there's a long series of of kind of history-focused Daily Democrat articles that you might have noticed. The Celebrate Woodland Committee has reserved articles um in May, June, August, and November. We're already working on the first two of those features. Um, and these are sort of long-form uh things about Woodland's past, present, and future that uh again, we hope to um bring to the community and 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 give people a new perspective on things they might not have uh read about before. You will very soon be seeing branding downtown with this, again, the awesome logo, uh both on the light poles and eventually across the street. And any day now, you should be able to see uh the same branding up on the digital sign on Interstate Five. All year, we'll be taking pictures and writing stories to uh document all these cool things we've been planning. And early in twenty twenty-two, community members will have an opportunity to um purchase a commemorative yearbook we're going to put out. Um, so folks can remember this um year-long celebration in twenty twenty-one uh for Woodland Sesquicentennial. And we're really excited about that, um both as a keepsake and um, you know, uh uh not only a memory of the celebration, but a really interesting year in in Woodland's history, right, uh emerging from a pandemic and hopefully celebrating all the good things going on in our our bright future. And as you might expect, um we're working on apparel, stickers, hats, the aforementioned T-shirts uh that will be available at events. I want to close with just a brief overview of this website we keep talking about. Um, once again, Sam and Trista Kennedy put a lot of work into this. Um, and it's a super user-friendly resource for um all of us and community members who might be tuning in or might be interested. Uh, it's celebratewoodland.org. Uh, this is what the homepage looks like. And I'm just going to zoom in on, if you go to the fourth thing across the top there in the menu, you can click Get Involved. And when you hit Get Involved, it'll bring you to a little grid like this. And as you can see, this is really easy way just to click and learn more about ways to plug into this year-long celebration. Some of these we've talked about, like the bike route, like the T-shirt. Um, some of these we haven't even touched on yet, right? We want to hear people's family stories. That's at the top right, just why they've been in Woodland, um why they like Woodland, and you know, perhaps why they moved here at some point. At the bottom left, you see you can uh find out more about getting a commemorative brick for the one hundred and fiftieth Heritage Brick Campaign. So there's a ton of resources just sitting there at celebratewoodland.org. So, you know, I would say as community ambassadors, as council members and city staff, if you run into people who have questions about what we're up to, what we're doing, how they can get plugged in, directing them straight to the website is a is a really good choice, um or to anyone on the planning committee I mentioned earlier. That will uh conclude my remarks on the Celebrate Woodland summary, but happy to answer any questions you might have. And, you know, Rich and Tanya are experts as well.
Mayor, can I say something real quick?
You certainly may.
You can see why I'm so excited about this project.
Yeah.
This is just taking on its life, and I can't be happier with Spencer and the rest of the crew and and under the leadership of our city manager who's letting us uh, you know, work on this project and just letting it go out as as fast and best as we can. And I'm so pleased that community members are jumping in uh as we invited them to come up with their own ideas to celebrate uh Woodland's nine and fiftieth. So you can see why we're excited about this, Mr. Mayor, and uh we look forward to carrying out this uh this project throughout the rest of the year.
You know, the first thing I have to say is, is it it just warms my heart. Not only are we celebrating our hundred and fifty years of being a city, but we're really building for the future with all of this activity, bringing our community closer together and and increasing our collective regard for this special place we're privileged to live. So I want to thank both uh both our council members for their leadership on this. I certainly think uh Spencer Bowen, as our new communications director, has already shown how valuable he is to our efforts uh to do these good things. Uh, colleagues, are there others of you who wish to comment tonight? Well, I think uh we're all just bowled over by by the good news and the great ideas that have been coming out. Uh, Madam Clerk, does any member of the public wish to speak on this tonight?
Uh, no.
All right, but there's no actual action required. Uh, we've received the update. We look forward to seeing all of this roll out in the weeks ahead. We hope our citizens throughout Woodland will take advantage of the website, celebratewoodland.org uh to get involved, share their family stories, and do any of the other things that are out there, maybe think of some new things as well, and share them uh with our council colleagues. So uh if that's, if I think that's the end of our agenda for tonight. We do have one closed session item. We expect no reportable action, uh but I will uh be back to adjourn after the closed session. Uh, with that, I think we are ready to go to closed session. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
That is correct.
And we say good night to all of our citizens who have joined us this evening. Have a safe and and happy evening. Good night.